Good evening. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order at six oh four. Commissioner Rounds, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes. Thanks for the pledge, raise your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Definitely Chair Jimenez, Commissioner Ayala.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez, present. Commissioner Rounds.
Here.
Vice Chair Carver Hall.
Here.
Chair Jimenez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Ex parte communications, this section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Was there any communications?
Commissioner Carver Hall, none.
Commissioner Ayala, none.
And myself, none. Let's move on to public comments. Public comments are now open, anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not the agenda. The Planning Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through Zoom application, please note you will have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members wishing to speak?
No, we do not, sir.
Thank you. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number six, public hearing. Continued from Planning Commission meeting October tenth. Sequa adoption of mitigation negative declaration development plan approval case number nine, three, three dash one conditional use permit case number eight, three, three modification permit case number one, three, four, seven. And now I would like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number six.
No, 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 because of onesie recall it. There's some mancering there.
Commissioner. So staff had received a letter in November second, two thousand twenty-two from the applicant attorney regarding exemption from the state code. According to the Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act. The letter was submitted a little bit late, so staff is recommending to continue the item to the next Planning Commission meeting. So we have more time to review the letter. And that's the staff recommendation for the item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do any commissioners have any questions for Jimmy Wong on the continuance? Okay, so the public is hearing is open. Do the applicants wish to speak at the podium at this time? Okay, well, thank you. Was there any comments via Zoom or email? No? Okay. So then, could I get a motion in a second to continue to the next meeting, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two?
Commissioner Carver Hall moved to continue to the next meeting. Twenty, what was, I'm sorry.
December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Carver Hall and a second by Commissioner Rounds.
Yes.
Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Ayala.
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds.
Aye.
Vice Chair Carver Hall.
Aye.
Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Four zero.
So ordered. Item seven, public hearing. Sequa guidelines, sections one, five, three, zero, one, class one alcohol sales conditional use permit. Case number eighty-one, I would like to call upon Code Enforcement Officer Louis Colazo to please present item number seven.
Good evening, commissioners. Before I start, I wanted to introduce Michelle Norwood, Assistant Director of Police Services. She's, I don't know if some of all of you have met her, but I just wanted to make sure you could introduce you to her. Yes, alcohol sales conditioning use permit case number eighty-one. The applicant is SCC Distribution Network. They are distributed, a distributor that assists startup Latino craft beer businesses by providing warehouse space and distribution services. As well as introducing these crafters to to the retail establishments and restaurants so they can sell that beer that they're they're creating. So essentially, if you want to, I don't want to downplay it the way this was, but if you think about it, it's somebody that's doing some alcohol, either, if you remember, geezers used to have the that draft or the craft in their side area. They can make their beers and things of that nature, that kind of a situation, and then sell it. And so SCC will take that craft beer and then start selling it out in the market. So everybody gets to taste the beer. Apparently, it's a big thing now, and so I haven't, I haven't tasted a lot of those beers, so. In accordance with section one fifty-five point six two eight, the applicant is requesting approve alcohol sales condition use permit case number eighty-one to allow the warehousing and distribution of alcohol beverages at one thirty-six twenty Imperial Highway, Unit Three. The location is zone heavy manufacturing M two. It's developed with five buildings, it's shown in the yellow area there. That location is just, I would say about two hundred yards just west of Ecology, like Marquardt and Imperial. The industrial development is commonly known as the Trico Imperial Business Park. They have onsite traffic circulation and provide two hundred and nine parking spaces, which complies with the city code. Their general plan designation is light industrial and Imperial Highway is designated as a major industrial street in the general plan. If you saw the report, there's certain criteria that we have taken into consideration when we reintroduce these these cases, and some of the items are on there. Their parking, again, the site complies with the parking regulations. They do have onsite circulation for traffic circulation with three driveways that have egress and ingress onto Imperial Highway. The business hours of operation are Monday through Friday from eight o'clock to five P M. A security plan will be required from them. Proximity to sensitive land uses, on the next slide, I'll show you where some of those sensitive areas are. Proximity to alcohol beverages users, other alcohol users. There's no onsite retail, everything's warehouse distribution, so we don't feel that there's an impact or is going to be overloading the area with alcohol sales or retail establishments. Control of litter, littering. They are required to comply with the conditions of approval and of course, the Santa Fe Springs Property Maintenance Ordinance, as all businesses are. So, but it's still part of the criteria we have to take into consideration. Once again, property maintenance, they are again required to comply with all the conditions of approval and the property maintenance ordinance. Control of public nuisances, the use involves warehouse distribution activity, no foreseen negative impacts are can be determined from that location again, it's really low key. Going back to the sensitive areas or land uses. The subject location is one mile walking distance to Los Alamos. I'm sorry, Los Altos Elementary, which is the circle, the red circle on the top of that area. And two miles walking distance from Saint Linus, Saint Linus Catholic Church, which is the bottom circle. Again, these are walking distances, which we don't believe kids are going to go into the industrial area. And then without that retail element to the business not being there, we don't believe any kids are going to want to go over there or it's going to have a negative impact to those those land uses. In accordance with the public notices compliance, we did publish a notice to the public on the newspaper, which is the item on the left. And mailers were sent out to property owners within five hundred feet of that location. Those, both the the publication and the notices went out on November third. And thank you, Teresa, she helped out on that. And then in regards to Sequa, the project's category exempt pursuant to section one, five, three, oh, one, class one, which is an existing facility. So no new construction is being done. The offices are already developed, it's a warehouse, so nothing new is going to occur. We recommend recommendations, there are six recommendations on the on the staff report in the front sheet. Including it, including that the matter be approved, subject to the conditions of approval contained in resolution two nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, which is attached to your staff report. And and submit this item to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, for ultimate approval. I can take any questions if you have any from here. If, are there any questions from this? No? Okay.
Well, this might be for the applicant, but I was wondering how long they've been in business? Do you have any idea?
Again, I don't think they came out on Zoom, they didn't come to the meeting. Do they, do they show up on Zoom? Oh, you are, okay.
Are you done with your report?
I am redone with.
Oh, okay, so. Okay, so any questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I'll ask the applicant how long he's been in business and if there are any other facilities of this type that you've been involved in.
Okay, so let me open the public hearing. So I would like to open the public hearing at six seventeen. And I would like to call upon the applicant to please state your name and residence for the record.
Hello, my name is Alfredo Rocha, I live in Downey, California. And to answer the commissioner's question, we've been in business for one year. We started in a smaller location out in Monrovia and are currently doing an A B C transfer to a bigger location here in Santa Fe Springs.
Great. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Commissioner Carver Hall, I have one on your address. I know where your properties at, there are no liquor sales, of course, by there. So I think the closest would be a liquor sale, maybe about a mile away at Sportsman's Lounge, right? That bar, isn't it like a mile or so from you?
No, the closest retail sales would be a liquor store, and I'm trying to remember the name of it, it's on Imperial and Carmenita, it's right next to the Rashada Tyque cuisine.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. That's, that's, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do. What type of, are you conducting any type of background vetting for the individuals that are going to be working at this facility? That could potentially show, you know, a history of DUI or intoxication, being that although there's not going to be any sales, but they are going to be consuming alcohol and there's a proximity of a couple of, you know, schools nearby, what type of background check are you going to be doing?
Don't intend to hire just my partner and myself for right now. We both went through extensive background checks with the A B C, but we have no short term need for any type of employees. And if we did, we'd obviously go through any type of background check required to make sure that they don't have any DUIs similar to what we went through. Usually apply the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no other questions? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone on Zoom?
My apologies, Commissioner Hernandez is texting me. No, sir, no one on.
What about any emails?
No emails were received, and I would, did you put my name, or you put your name on that one?
No, we didn't receive any at the Police Services Center.
Okay, great. I would like to close public hearing at six nineteen. Do any commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? No, could I get a motion in a second? To approve resolution two nineteen dash two thousand twenty-two regarding A S C U P eighty-one.
Commissioner Carver Hall, I move.
Commissioner Ayala, second.
Motion by Vice Chair Carver Hall, second by Commissioner Ayala. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Ayala.
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds.
Aye.
Vice Chair Carver Hall.
Aye.
Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Passes four zero.
So ordered.
Thank you.
Attorney Mia Hira.
Yes, the commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the City Council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen day period.
Thank you. Item number eight, public hearing. Sequa guidelines, section one, five, three, three, two, class thirty-two conditional use permit case number eight, two, four. I would like to call upon Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez to present item number eight.
Good evening. I do apologize for the interruption, I need to conduct a roll call vote as Commissioner Hernandez is joining our meeting via Zoom. So I can conduct that, please.
Commissioner Ayala.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Rounds.
Here.
Vice Chair Carver Hall.
Here.
Chair Jimenez.
Here.
All present. Thank you, everyone, my apologies.
Yes.
Continue.
Good evening, planning commissioners, members of the audience and staff members. Today I will present to you item number eight. Conditional use permit case number eight, two, four, a request for approval to establish, operate and maintain a truck and trailer for trailer facility parking lot on a property located at one, four, eight hundred Radburn Avenue, A P N number eighty, sixty-nine, zero, zero, seven, zero, five, seven, within the M two heavy manufacturing zone. Applicant is Best California Gasoline L L T. Conditions permit case number eight, two, four. The subject site is located at one, four, eight, zero, zero, Radburn Avenue, that address was given by our building inspector. Located in the east side of the Radburn Avenue. The lot size is about one point seven eight acres and the general plan designation is industrial. The zoning designation is M two heavy manufacturing and the applicant is Best California Gas L T D. Little background and history on this property. So initially, the subject parcel was comprised of a single parcel, which is A P N number eight, zero, six, nine, zero, zero, seven, zero, three, one. Measured approximately four point nine eight acres and was located at one, three, nine, one, one Gannett Street. A request for approval to subdivide the parcel was approved on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. And the proposed project will involve the norly one point seven eight acre parcel you see above. The applicant is proposing to establish, operate and maintain a truck and trailer storage yard located at one, four, eight hundred Radburn Avenue. These are the existing side photos that we took of street frontage on the west view, northwest view, the northeast view and the southwest view. Zoning requirements in accordance with the section one, five, five, two, four, three, I, seven of the city zoning ordinance. Hello, okay. A conditional a conditional use permit is required for a truck and trailer storage yard. So code section one, five, five, two, four, three states, the following uses shall be permitted in the M two zone only after a valid condition use permit has first been issued. Trucking transit and transportation facilities of the following kinds, trucks, truck trailer or truck tractor storage. So consideration of approval of C U P case number eight, two, four. Parking and circulation. The truck and trailer parking lot has no parking requirements, however, the applicant has provided thirty-six parking stalls, thirty-two of which are dedicated to truck and trailer parking and four standard located within the main entry. The proposed project therefore exceeds the minimum parking requirements and the proposed driveways were measured thirty, thirty feet in width. Ingress will will occur from the norly driveway and egress will occur from the southerly driveway. Let me see before you. The proposed enclosed parking lot will have ten foot high tubular steel gates with screening, twelve foot high split fence block walls located on the north side, southwest and rear of the property. And security gates will control egress and ingress, ingress and egress to the parking areas. New light fixtures will also be installed throughout the subject property and a line of sight was provided by the applicant to ensure the city, the proposed truck and trailer storage yard would not be visible from the public view. Landscaping. So the mainly, majority of the landscape will be provided along the Radbury Avenue frontage. And the landscape requirements for this part, for this project is a twenty-five, eighty square feet and the applicant is providing twenty-six, ten square feet. And that includes six percent of the parking area as well. Environmental review and sequa. So staff preliminary determination project C U P eight, two, four, found to be categorically exempt pursuant to section one, five, three, three, two, class thirty-two infill development projects. It is, the site is less than five acres, consistent with applicable G P policies, which is general plan policies. No value as habitat for endangered species, no significant effects related to traffic, noise, air or water quality. Inside may be adequate served by required utilities. And if the planning commission agrees, staff intends to file a notice of exemption. Assisting with the O P R's technical advisory, the city of Santa Fe Springs has determined the following screening criteria for certain land development projects that may be presumed to result in a less than significant V M T impact. And what you see before you is the project is expected to generate a total of fifty trips per day. And based on C A Cal Office of Planning of Research of O P R, a hundred and ten trips per day is less significant. Fifty is less significant than a hundred and ten per day per O P R. And no further V M T analysis is therefore not necessary. The public hearing notice was sent out to twenty-one property owners within the five hundred feet of subject property on November third. Posted in the city hall, town center hall and the library. And on November tenth, one inquiry was received via email on the proposed project. The inquiry, property owner located at one, four, seven hundred dash one, four, seven, oh, four, Radbury Avenue, inquired on the construction of a fence barrier on the south side of the building to prevent trucks from backing into the building. Our response, wheel stops will be installed, which should help prevent trucks and trailers from backing into the building. The building is, the the wall is facing the south of that building and the project is facing the north side. And so after speaking with the applicant, we request and recommend to add a condition to state that wheel stops will be added to meet this inquiry. Along the northerly side. Considerations. The truck and trailer parking lot has no parking requirements, applicant has provided thirty-six parking stalls, thirty-two of which are dedicated to truck and trailer parking and four standard stalls. The project therefore exceeds a minimum parking requirements. Screening. The truck yard will be fully enclosed with both a split face block wall and a tubular steel fence gate with metal mesh. With the combination of the perimeter screen and landscaping, the trucking activity will be completely screened with public view. Security. Onsite personnel will control ingress and egress to the truck yard area and the new light fixtures will also be installed throughout the subject property. No, trucks will be empty at all times. Additionally, landscape requirement is twenty-five, eighty square feet and they are providing twenty-six, ten square feet. And the majority of the landscape will be provided along the Radbury Avenue frontage. The proposed landscaping exceeds the code requirements. And lastly, traffic, the average daily trips is below the state V M T threshold. And additionally, the city's traffic engineer determined that the proposed use would have less than significant impact on traffic and circulation. Staff recommendations is fine and determine that the proposed project is considered to be categorically exempt from Sequa. Approved conditional use case number eight, two, four, subject to the conditions of approval within resolution two, twenty, dash, two thousand twenty-two and adopt resolution number twenty, twenty, dash, two thousand twenty-two, which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. And this concludes my presentation, I do have the applicants here, if you have any questions to ask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would like to open the public hearing at six thirty. I would like to call upon the applicants if you wish to speak at this time. Please state your name and residence for the record.
Yes, good afternoon. Members of the commission, my name is Stefan Wandel, our company's offices are at thirteen, one, one, six Imperial in Santa Fe Springs. First of, I appreciate the planning commission hearing our project. And Ms. Jimenez and other city staff are working with us on this project for quite some time. As you probably know, and I'll keep my comments really short. As you probably know, our company is also the owner of Golden Springs Development in the city, we're long-term owners. When we first look at this small site, we were really trying to figure out how to best serve the existing businesses of Santa Fe Springs, really provide an amenity to not only our tenants but to the area. And if at all possible, getting trucks off the streets and parked onto a site as opposed to streets. As you've seen, we spent quality time working with staff on the aesthetics from the exterior, we put the landscaping where it matters, where the public will see it. I think we've, as you saw from the images, we spent again quality time and and funds to make it happen. We think this is an appropriate use for the area, it's an industrial area, there's no residential near us. What else can I tell you? But anyway, I'm here to answer questions, if you have questions of us, please let me know.
Great, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions at this time?
I read that some of these trucks could be transporting hazardous chemicals. What type of hazardous chemicals will they be transporting?
One of the conditions that we added, they have to be empty while they're being stored at the yard. So I'm not sure if they're going to have any chemicals when they're transporting, but when they're storing them, they will be completely empty, and that was also a request made by the fire department.
I also see that there might be some alterations to drainage patterns, which could lead to polluted runoffs, increasing chances of flooding and violate water quality.
Yeah, thank you, so both the state and and the city have specific requirements around runoff. This is why there are specific detention basins planned, there's actually two of them in the front of the project that is intended to come in and and maintain and filter all the storm water that come in. Only over, a case of over a hundred year flood will exceed the the quantity of those basins. So we view that as unlikely to happen. And again, if if it does, whatever contaminants are expected will end up in the detention basins, not in the street. But again, these trucks are going to be parked empty. So I suppose anything's possible, but we've done what we can to minimize the risks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? And were there any emails submitted?
No, Chipper St. Jimenez, that was done.
Okay, great. So I'd like to close public hearing at 6:34. Could I get a motion in a second?
Commissioner Rounds will move.
Okay, I'll second. So motion by Commissioner Rounds, second by myself, Commissioner Jimenez. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Miss Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carbajal?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
So ordered.
Teresa, for the record, there was the request to add the condition for the wheel stops. I guess I want the record to show that that was part of the approval that they were making.
And that was, yeah.
Is that resolution 220-2022? Okay, so one more time, could I get a motion for approval of resolution 220-2022 regarding CUP 824?
Commissioner Rounds will move.
And I'll second. Roll call vote, please, one more time, sorry.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carbajal?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
So ordered. Attorney Mia Hira, please.
Yes, the commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant of the commission's action. The applicant or other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council and the appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within that 14-day period.
Thank you. Items nine and 10 are being presented together. Item nine is SEQA adoption of a negative declaration development plan, case number 987, and adoption of a negative declaration development plan, DPA, case number 988. And I would like to call upon assistant planner Claudia Jimenez to present items number nine and 10.
Evening planning commissioners. Excited about this project. So before you, I will be presenting you item number nine and item number 10. A request for approval to allow the construction and operation of a new 50-foot-tall V-shaped electronic billboard with 14-foot-by-48-foot display areas on property located at 8717 Pioneer Boulevard, APN number 817029-004 in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. The applicant is 605 Investments LLC. Additionally, a request for approval to allow the construction and operation of a new 50-foot-tall double-face electrical billboard with 14-by-48-foot display areas on property located at 8717 Pioneer Boulevard, APN number 8177031017 with the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Again, applicant is 605 Investments LLC. Development plan approval, DPA 987 and DPA 988. The subject property located at 8717 Pioneer Boulevard is comprised of two parcels, APN number 8177031017 and 8177029004, separated by a 336-foot axis eastment and measuring approximately 238,273.2 square foot, equivalent to 5.7 acres. The property is owned M2 heavy manufacturing and is currently developed with an existing self-storage, dollar self-storage. So background. Ordinance number 1118. It was adopted by the city council on September 2021 and it established standards for the installation of electrical billboards on Interstate 605 corridor per section 155.519 of the municipal code. There are some key elements and the key elements are as follows. Shall only be in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. DPA and operating agreements OA are required and define and regulate digital billboards, general requirements, development standards, standards of design, and operational restrictions. Entitlement request. A development plan approval case number 987, a request for approval to allow the construction and operation of a new 50-foot-tall V-shaped electronic billboard with a 14-by-48 display areas on the property located at 8717 Pioneer Boulevard, APN number 8170029004 in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. The project site address will be 8729 Pioneer Boulevard. And it should be noted that a draft operation agreement exists and will be taken before the city council for approval. So project site 8729 Pioneer Boulevard, per section 155.519H of the municipal code for interstate corridor electronic billboard sign. The proposed electronic billboard must be more than 200 feet from the centerline, which we have here before you, more than 200 feet from residential uses, which is 202 currently. A minimum of 25 feet from any building and property line and it must be 1,000 feet from any other electronical billboard on the same side. And as you can see, it's 38 feet from a nearest building and it's set 25 feet from the property line. And also to add about the 1,000 feet of electronic billboard on the same side. This is the first of its kind off on Interstate 605 in the city of Santa Fe Springs, so there is no, there's no other billboard, so. Elevations. So elevations. The proposed billboard will be contemporary in design and will have a maximum height of 50 feet measured from the centerline of the nearest travel lane of the I605 freeway to the top of the billboard face. The design includes a six-foot architectural element displaying the city's logo. Perforated metal filler panel will provided for screening within the undercarriage and sides with display areas measuring 14 feet by 48 feet in length. What you see here before you is the proposed project. Development plan approval case number nine and eight, the double-face electronic billboard. A request for approval to allow the construction and operation of a new 50-foot-tall double-face electronic billboard with 14-by-40 display areas on property located at 8717 Pioneer Boulevard, APN number 8177-031-017 within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. The project site address is 8715 Pioneer Boulevard. And again, it should be noted that the draft operation agreement exists and will be taken before the city council for approval. Each DPA has its own operation agreement. Per section 155.519H of the municipal code of interstate corridor electronic billboard sign program, the proposed electronic billboard must be more than 200 feet from the central line, more than 200 feet from the residential uses, and a minimum of 25 feet from any building and property line and must be 1,000 feet from any electronic billboard on the same. So for this particular billboard, it's not meeting the 25 minimum setback from a property line or a building. So I have some information for you. So setback requirements, again, the 25 minimum setback requirement from property line and at least 25 foot from any building. So as proposed, the billboard will be located in the southeast corner of the property line with a setback of 2 feet 7 inches to the south of the building and 1 foot 5 inches from the west property line. However, upon showing a good cause, the minimum setbacks may be reduced as part of the development plan approval. Although the proposed electronic billboard does not conform, there is good cause. The minimum setbacks may be reduced as part of the development plan approval. And the good causes are not limit visibility of signage, restrict sightlines, modify traffic flow. Columns will not be located outside the existing drive aisle. The billboard does not overhang or project over the roof of a building. And other options to place a billboard further away from the building would not only place the billboard closer to the residential, which will not meet our 200-feet requirement to the properties to the north. Therefore, the reduction in the minimum setback is justified for the standards set forth in this chapter. The proposed billboard will be contemporary in design and will have a maximum height of 50 feet, measured from the centerline of the nearest travel lane of the I605 freeway to the top edge of the billboard face. The design includes a six-foot architectural element displaying the city's logo. Perforated metal filler panel will be provided for screening within the undercarriage and sides and will display areas measuring 14-by-48 feet. Environmental review SEQA. So one environmental document was prepared for the projects and ISND prepared by EPD Solutions. An ISND circulated for required 30-day public review and comment period between the period of May 3rd, 2022 through June 3rd, 2022, disregard the 19th. Not sure why it's there. Staff received two responses relating to the proposed ISND. Gabriela Banda Mission Indians, notification of ground disturbance, and California Departed Transportation Caltrans outdoor advertising permit was also required. Public hearing notices were mailed out on November 3rd, 2022 and also posted in city hall, town center hall, and the library. Public hearing notices were also published in the local newspaper on November 3rd, 2022. And no comments and inquiries received to the state. For your consideration, will be enhanced with an architectural treatment and screening materials distinctive from the electronic billboards on Interstate 5. Tapered slant wide at the bottom and thinner at the top. A 12-inch-tall illuminated city logo within the six architectural element will be displayed at the very top of the billboards. It will not create any additional traffic. The pole location is outside the drive aisle within an existing curb-protected landscape area and the pole has no potential limit the visibility of signage, restrict sightlines, and modify traffic flow or create confusion with the traffic signs. So staff recommendations before you is approved EPA 987 and 988, subject to the COAs as stated within the resolutions of 221-202, 2022, and 222-2022, attachment A, and approve and adopt the proposed ISND and adopt resolution 221-2022 and 222-2022, which incorporates a planning commissioner's findings and actions regarding this matter. And this concludes my presentation. I do have the applicants here before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, I would like to open a public hearing at 6:47. And I would like to call upon the applicant if you wish to speak. Please use the raise, actually, please name, state your name and residence for the record, please. Thank you.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Samuel Juarez, resident of Compton, behalf of the applicant. I just want to thank everyone here for listening to our projects and also Claudia for helping us prepare for this plan commission. So right now, we'll be taking any questions.
Great, thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment. I know the city's been working on this type of billboard for a long time. There's a lot of hoops to jump through, a lot of discussion, and I think it's a win-win for you and a win-win for the city. So congratulations, well, I don't know yet, so. It's a great project.
Well, I think it's great that we have billboards on the 605, too. So that's a, I know we have some on the 5 freeway, but now to have it on the 605, that's a great thing, so. Let's see. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, did you have, did any of the commissioners have any other comments? Was there any comments submitted email?
No, Chipper St. did not receive any and there is no raise hat by there.
Okay, great. Then I would like to close public comments at 6:49. And is there a motion to approve resolutions 2021-2022 regarding DPA 987 and resolution 222-2022 regarding DPA 988?
Commissioner Carbajal, I move.
Commissioner Hernandez will second.
Everybody's excited.
All right, so we'll get a motion by Vice Chair Carbajal and second by Commissioner Hernandez. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Most definitely, Chair Jimenez. Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds? Vice Chair Carbajal?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
So ordered. Attorney Mia Hira, please.
Yes, again, the commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 14 days.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to new business. Categorically exempt, section 15305, class 5 modification permit, case number 1354. I would like to call upon associate planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number 11.
Oh, Commissioner, I'm here to present modification permit case number 1354. The modification permit request is to, a request for a modification of property development standard to allow an eight-foot-tall wrought iron fence to be constructed within the required 20-foot side yard setback along Pike Street on the property located at 9630 Norwalk Boulevard within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. And the applicant is McMaster Car Supply Company. So a little background and location. Subject property is located at 9630 Norwalk Boulevard, the zone M2 heavy manufacturing. The property is located at a southeast corner of Norwalk Boulevard and Pacific Street. Currently consists of an existing 720-square-foot industrial building and occupied by McMaster Car Supply Company. And McMaster Car is a distributor of industrial material. The subject area for the modification permit is located along the eastern portion of the subject property near the end of the cul-de-sac on Pike Street. And the area currently consists of 78 parking stalls. According to the applicant, the combination of being a remote location and limited traffic going through the street, there are multiple thefts within the northeast parking lot area. So to enhance security at the subject property, the applicant is proposing to construct an eight-foot-high, eight-foot-tall wrought iron fence along the perimeter of the parking area within the 20-foot required setback along Pike Street. So according to the current zoning ordinance, property are required to have a 20-foot setback before they can construct any fence or wall over three-and-a-half foot in height. So therefore, the applicant is requesting approval of the subject modification permit to allow for the proposed eight-foot-tall wrought iron fence to be encroached into the required 20-foot side setback area. This is an enlarged version of the site plan. Although they are encroaching into the setback area, there will be a 1 foot and 6 inch setback from the property line. Upon review, staff make the determination that the project qualifies for a category exemption pursuant to section 15305, class 5, minor alteration to land use limitation. The proposed mod only involve a minor change to the setback by allowing an eight-foot-tall wrought iron fence to be located within the required setback area. No additional square footage is being proposed and the change No additional square footage is being proposed and the change, uh, the use will be unchanged. If the planning commission agrees, staff will file a notice of exemption to the State Clearinghouse and LA County Recorder Office. Uh, notice was sent to the adjacent property, a total of ten, were sent out to the adjacent property on November third, two thousand twenty-two. Staff have not received, uh, received any, uh, a correspondent, and it was posted also on the same day on, uh, City Hall, Town Center Hall and the library. Uh, for your consideration, um, according to the applicant, the last two year, a total of fourteen police report were filed related to auto theft at this parking lot location. Uh, because of our current zoning code, um, the applicant will only be allowed to construct a three-foot, six-inch-tall fence within the required setback area. And that will not, uh, help with the security. Therefore, the applicant is requesting the modification to allow them to exceed the three and a half foot requirement, uh, by installing eight-foot-tall wrought iron fence in the perimeter of the setback area. Um, the modification permit, if granted, would not be detrimental to other person or property in the area. The proposed wrought iron fence will enhance the, the security and prevent future auto-related that at this location. Uh, staff recommend that, uh, to approve the proposed modification permit, case number one three five four. And, uh, found that the proposed modification permit is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section one five three oh five, class five. And also a dot resolution number two two three dash twenty twenty-two, which incorporate the planning commission finding and action regarding this matter. And, uh, that conclude my presentation. I believe the applicant is here on Zoom if you have any question regarding the project.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Commissioner Carbajal, I have one. On the eight-foot, um, fence that's proposed, as there also, because of all these, uh, break-ins, they're not gonna put like barbed wire over that too, right? It's just the fence only or? You know, just trying to get a visual here.
The proposed, uh, is a wrought iron fence. There will not be any barbed wire on top of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I would like to call upon the applicant. If you wish to speak, please, uh, state your name and city of residence.
Yeah, Michael Mount, uh, McGowan.
Excuse me?
Hi, my name is Michael Magglio. I'm a resident of Los Angeles. I'm the regional facilities manager for McMaster Car. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for our applicant? Okay. Well, thank you, sir. There's no questions at this time. And, um, having no further comments or questions, I would like to request a motion to approve resolution two two three dash twenty twenty-two regarding MOD one three five four.
Commissioner Ayala, motion?
Okay, moved by Commissioner Ayala, second by Commissioner Rounds. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Most definitely, Chair Jimenez. Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carbajal?
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes five zero?
So ordered. Item number twelve, new business. Sequa categorically exempt section one five three zero five, class five modification permit, case number one three five five. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number twelve.
Commissioner? Subject request is modification permit case number one three five five. A request for a modification of property development standard to reserve, but not provide twenty-two required parking stall on the property located at one two zero two zero Bloomfield Avenue within the M two dash BP heavy manufacturing buffer parking zone. And the applicant is Palmer Johnson Power System. Uh, the subject property is located at one two zero two zero Bloomfield Avenue, uh, currently zoned as M two BP, which is, uh, heavy manufacturing buffer parking zone. Uh, the subject property is located at a southeast corner of Bloomfield Avenue and, uh, Alar Street. Uh, currently consists of a seventeen thousand four hundred twenty-three square foot industrial building and is currently occupied by Palmer Johnson Power System. Um, they are an industrial equipment supplier and repair. So the subject property, uh, subject area, um, request for the modification permit is the easternly portion of the parking area located along Alar Street. The applicant is requesting to utilize twenty-two of the existing twenty-four parking stalls for outdoor storage of equipment and product related to that business. So according to our current zoning ordinance, uh, based on the square footage of the building, thirty-five parking stalls is being required. Um, however, the applicant is proposing to provide only thirteen stalls, so there is a twenty-two-stall deficiency. Here's the proposed site plan with the approval of the modification permit. All the parking will be located at the west side of the building and the east side of the building will consist of two parking stalls uh, in front of the proposed new fence and the rest of the area will be used as part of a outdoor storage. And here is a, uh, alternate parking site plan that show how the applicant can provide all the required parking if needed. Some justification, according to that employee roster provided by the applicant, there is only one shift and a total of six employee. So the thirteen parking stalls that the applicant is proposing to provide will leave seven stalls available for visitor. Therefore, there shouldn't be, there should be more than enough parking for the building occupant and visitor. So outdoor storage is very important as part of the business and applicant is proposing to construct a new six-foot-high wrought iron fence with privacy screen to screen the outdoor storage in addition to the modification permit. Um, upon review, um, the proposed project staff have determined that the project qualified for a categorical exemption from the, from Sequa pursuant to section one five three oh five, class five. Um, the subject modification only involve a minor change to reserve, but not provide twenty-two parking stalls. And there will be no addition to, addition to the square footage of the building and the use will not, will be unchanged. If the planning commission agrees, staff will file a notice of exemption to the State Clearinghouse and LA County Recorder Office. A notice to adjacent property was sent, uh, on November third, two thousand twenty-two, uh, five of, five total were sent out and also posted as City Hall, Town Center Hall and the library. And staff have not received any correspondence related to the project. Uh, for your consideration, according to applicant, um, there's only six employee total, uh, working at this location. So the thirteen parking stall that the applicant is proposing will be enough for any visitor and the building occupant. So there will not be any impact on the surrounding property or street parking. That, um, the applicant also provided alternative site plan that will identify where the twenty-two missing stalls will be located if that's need, if it's needed. So staff recommend to propose a modification to approve the, uh, to find the proposed modification permit, case number one three five four is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section one five three oh five, class five. Approved modification permit one three five five, subject to the condition stay within the attached resolution and a dot resolution number two two four dash twenty twenty-two, which incorporate the planning commission finding and action regarding this matter. So that conclude my, uh, presentation. I do have a representative from the business here. If you have any question related to the business.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
As far as the outs, uh, outside storage, what, what are you gonna be storing there?
Okay, um, yes. So could, uh, the applicant please state your name and city of residence for the record?
Good afternoon. My name is Maile Chavez and I'm, uh, live in the city of Downey and I'm the service manager of Palmer Johnson Power Systems here in Santa Fe Springs.
Nice, thank you.
Uh, what we're storing is actually we're staging and the equipment that comes in. So we actually do exchange transmissions and components that go to the, uh, telehandlers. A lot of the manufacturers in here, we are an OEM, um, distributor for all the heavy equipment machinery. And what we do is we exchange transmission and we stage the equipment outside. Some of it comes in for us to do the, uh, power shift on the, uh, modules, which means we have to electronically remove the codes and put it back on. Obviously, that takes two or three days sometimes to do it. Sometimes it takes a week. Um, the only thing, I guess, for the reason why we're being asked to move the modification is because when we did the licenses and everything for years back, things weren't done accordingly to the planning, right? Uh, we've been there for, I've been there for fif, almost fifteen years. We've been doing this for fifteen years. So I guess we were just trying to make sure we're up to code now because of some, um, paperwork or litigation that had to be done correctly. Um, so we're just trying to make sure that we follow suit to what we needed to be done, I guess, a couple of years ago.
Just to clarify, what, what are you actually repairs or modify, or what are you doing?
Transmissions, axles, we exchange them. We take one out, put one in on the equipment. The equipment comes into us. We also do the, uh, it's like when you take your car to a dealer, there's code on it. We erase the codes.
Okay.
And we change the module, we change your harness, we change a seat per se, um, with that aspect. And we've been doing this for quite some time.
So when you change out the axles in that, uh, automotive or trucks or whatever, um, is there any like fluid loss or any type of thing that could end up on the ground that could cause?
There is, um, but we, the way we do it and I, we've been doing this with QMD, uh, fire marshals have been, been inspecting us for the last fifteen years. I'd almost been there. Uh, we pass every regulation, everything's on that, uh, the way we do the transmissions is a lot different than the automotive industry. Uh, a lot of it comes with special hoses that you take the hose off and you put a plug and it doesn't leak. Uh, there is a couple of drainage where we do have small portions of less than a hundred and ten gallons, maybe every six months of oil because anything that falls, we do have buckets or, um, this, um, I would say the, um, drainage cartridge where the hoses fall in or the access of which is very, very minimal. Um, also all of our trays and all of our, uh, desks that we have where our technicians are working have a special gutter system all the way around. Then beyond the two ninety percent, if not ninety-nine percent of stuff stays on the table and it goes into the buckets. So there's really nothing on there that comes there. I believe we have, like I said, the fire marshal for the last five years for sure that I've been dealing with them myself. I've come to the place and they don't think we are a equipment manufacturer because our floors are so clean. And I'm, our doors is an open door policy. Anybody's welcome to come by.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners?
Being that you're, yeah, I do.
Yes.
Being that you're gonna have your, uh, equipment or, you know, product per se, you know, outdoors. What do you have in place in recurring, in regards to security to avoid attracting anyone from, you know, stealing or from theft?
Well, all the equipment, we provided new lighting, so the whole facility gets lit up at night. Uh, those are, um, lights that we provided within the last five years since, uh, we, we had, that we haven't had any incidents of break-in. Uh, our facility's also security with, uh, security systems, our large systems, uh, on the whole facility. Um, in regards to making sure the equipment plus all the equipment, I won't say they can't get vandalized, but that's the one reason why we want to make sure that the fencing is now, I would say, um, has the security we're looking at in regards to that. And we're gonna be addressing the fence because right now all we have is a wrought iron gate.
So, um, you've been doing this, right? You're just trying to bring it up to code and get everything?
We've been there, uh, Palmer Johnson has been there for, well, NRDRC was there for fifty years. They sold it to Palmer Johnson the last thirty years. I've been there for fifteen years.
But what I'm saying is storing the stuff outside, it's been happening. You're just trying to come up to code right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Code because we got a citation.
Okay, got you.
And, uh, we're trying to do the modification according to what the permits need to be. So we can continue to do business here in Santa Fe Springs.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay. Um, having no further questions, I would like to request a motion to approve resolution two two four dash twenty twenty-two regarding MOD one three five four.
Commissioner Rounds will move.
Commissioner Ayala, a second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rounds, second by Commissioner Ayala. Roll call vote, please.
Most definitely. Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carbajal? Vice Chair Carbajal? Commissioner Carbajal? She raised her hand. I believe she's having technical issues. I'll take that as a yes vote. Okay, and Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes five zero?
So ordered. Okay, moving on to item number thirteen, consent item. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion and roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the planning commission. Consent item A, alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number twenty-three. Consent item B, alcohol sales conditional use, case number thirty-four. And consent item C, alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number forty.
Items, can we read the title for all of those matters?
Oh, okay. So, um, consent item A, compliance review of alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number twenty-three to allow the continued alcohol beverage sales use involving the sale of alcoholic beverages on-site customer consumption at Veracruz Restaurant in C four community commercial zone located at nine nine three one Ornday Road, Veracruz Restaurant. Consent item B, alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number thirty-four. Compliance review of alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number thirty-four to allow the continued operation and maintenance of an alcohol beverage use involving the importing and wholesale distribution of distilled spirits, beer and wine at Wismatic Asian Foods located at one three four zero nine Orden Drive in the M two heavy manufacturing zone within the consolidated redevelopment project area. Consent item C, alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number forty. Compliance review of alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number forty to allow the continued operation and maintenance of an alcoholic beverage use involving the wholesale distribution of distilled spirits, beer and wine at Southern Wine and Spirits located in M two heavy manufacturing zone at one three five hundred Foster Road within consolidated redevelopment project area. For consent items, numbers thirteen A, thirteen B and thirteen C, is there a motion in the second?
Commissioner Carbajal, I move.
Okay.
Commissioner Rounds will second.
Okay, motion by Vice Chair Carbajal, second by Commissioner Rounds. Lieutenant Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carbajal?
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes five zero?
So ordered. Item number fourteen, announcements. Are there any commissioners that have an announcement they would like to share?
Commissioner Carbajal, can I start?
Yes.
I just want to apologize for not being there, um, today. I'm getting some medical results, so I want to actually just be at home for tonight. I also would like to thank Claudia for coming to the Heritage Arts Committee, uh, last month. Uh, I know the members appreciate when. Uh, I know the members appreciate when someone from planning goes uh, and gives always good news, but just to attend and find out what we're doing and so that they ask questions, and I really appreciate that. Um, Wayne, if we could still some, send someone. And then I also hope that everybody has a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Vice Chair Carbajal. Any other announcements?
Um, I too would like to wish everyone and their families a happy Thanksgiving, and as we get into this holiday season and, uh, and, um, good meeting tonight.
Yes, productive. No, okay, Johnny, Commissioner Hernandez, anything?
Yes, yes. Also, I, I want to piggyback also with the colleagues, um, wish everybody and staff a, a, a great Thanksgiving and be safe out there.
Thank you, and myself, I would like to wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving and like, um, Wayne says compliments of the season, correct? Okay, any announcements from staff?
We do not.
Okay. Okay, great. So I would like to adjourn this meeting at seven fifteen.